Hey, everyone. Welcome to the Marcello Center School District Board of Education meeting for tonight, Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. This time I would ask everyone to quick stand and join with me in the question of meetings.
The question is to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic, where it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the board if you would honor a hand carry amendment to the agenda under business. You'll recall that I sent you a while back a reopening plan and had informed you that I would put it on the agenda, and somehow it did not make its way. So if you would be so kind as to add item 6.3 under business, the approval of the reopening plan, I would be very appreciative.
Okay, so we get to 6.3.
I sure will. I don't know if you have anything to add, but I felt like it was appropriate today to recognize all the district staff. I think the buildings looked fantastic, the grounds looked fantastic, and we really had a great opening day. And I thought it might also be a great time for us to highlight our new teachers. It's a small group this year, four that are probationary and one filling in as an LTS, long-term sub for someone who's out of maternity leave. So we have, starting from the left, Jessica Purvis Long, our new UPK teacher, Kallin Cross, who is teaching fourth grade, Lynn Huff Summer, who's filling in for Erin Malone, who is expecting any minute. I haven't heard that she's had it, so I'm going to call her still expecting. Maria Anfield, who is a French and Spanish teacher at the high school, and Amy Lansbury, who is a special education teacher at the high school. So they are bringing great energy already to their buildings and to the district.
I wonder if Sunday's in kindergarten.
Tomorrow. They had their drop-in today, just like kindergarten does on the first day, where parents and kids come in, this is the classroom, and then tomorrow they'll be headed off those buses and dropped off in those cars. It's going to be great. So I thought we'd start our COVID return to school update with something more positive than COVID stuff. So I thought maybe our principals could share just about two minutes each about their opening day and all the great things that happened in the building. So maybe Bob will kick us off.
Sure. So Michelle mentioned earlier that our UPK and our kindergarten thing for their open ops today, which was super exciting because they were so excited. We were struck by the level of independence coming in for both UPK and kindergarten this year. We also had to certain bring school over a bus so they can see the bus ride and learn more about safety. That was a hit. Both at kindergarten today, which we were really excited. So we are welcoming them back for their very first full day tomorrow. And then we did have, we got a total of 402 students returning to KCH this year. And I got my first note today, Anne Stroll, that said, "I'm so excited. I love school, and I'm excited to be on the way out." So every year I have to pour it in my office and I just put in all the messages that it did. I hope you should get one on the first day, so that's the flavor for today. They were very energetic from that. We also welcomed back Lolo today. She was napping by 10:00 AM. She was so excited to see staff and students, but she was so napping, she was like, "Oh, wow." She was back at it around 10:30 or 11:00. She was stretching halfway, but our new kids in the district are so excited to keep it raw. And that is a force for a group that has never been in the world. There was a great energy today. Rivals and very friendly looking at the work we do today, given it's the first day, and people are a little unsure where they all need to go. If you welcome the new members tomorrow, we can pull this back.
Thanks, Bob. Katie?
Other mess. So we had a very successful opening day at CMA. It went by in a blur, but we were really excited to welcome all of our students back. And it was great to see the students who had been virtual last year, as well as some of our new students, new faces, and faces we hadn't seen in a year or so. We also had Teddy Hotduty today, and he was excited to have his first day at school, too. And I think like Lolo, he was playing on the office floor by about 11:00 AM. And when I saw him, I was like, "Teddy, that's a nice feel." I spent, I think, kind of about eating half my day in the cafeteria. Mike and I greeted each grade level as they ate lunch and went through home page games and also some other expectations and tried to jam it up for the school year. So, yeah, it was just a great day.
Our veteran, John Durkey.
I was on the floor earlier. Oh, I'm sorry. The high school, it was, you know, it was a typical, I would say, a typical opening for us. We had changing problems that we had worked through today. We had lost kids that we worked through today. We had happy faces feedback. We had some not so happy feedback. But really what it felt like, that's really the vibe that I had in every class today. Enjoy seeing kids that were very respectful of their teachers and wearing masks, carrying to, you know, in the middle of the hallway or passing, you know, full on. It really was, the sense you got that particularly loved being back in line here, there are going to be ones like you that have been back. And we're, I think we picked all the transportation issues that work every time, you know, all the little logistics that go on in the building and access to the center, those are kind of shady, kind of unwise. But I would say that, like Ash Ted, how my fans said this already, you know, Ash Ted's excited. Ash Ted, like 33rd, 40th day, and I was just as excited today as I was in the first day of the year. It was awful.
Great. Obviously, it's a great day when all the hard work that everyone's put into preparing comes to fruition and the kids actually show up. So good day. Hope all of you that have children in school got good reports as well. Just a few other updates on reopening. I just wanted to let you know, at the last couple of board meetings, we've had questions regarding just the vaccination status of staff. And I said two times that I'm still collecting, and I felt it appropriate that when I finished collecting, that I could actually tell you our number. So we are 93%. 93% of our staff are fully vaccinated. This includes regular staff. I did not include coaches and subs, because that's a whole other animal that we're still, the coaches we're not still working through, but the subs we're still working through. And I would say 94%, so there's a couple others that are three, actually, not fully vaccinated, but are on their way. So that percentage will go up slightly. I don't anticipate it's going to change much. The other folks that are not vaccinated have reasons, some of which are medical, and it'll probably stay that way. But we have some good plans to take care of everybody and keep everyone safe and have staff and students feel good about being here. So that's the main thing. Our weekly testing of the folks that are unvaccinated did commence last week. That'll be going on. My goal was to hopefully provide a more convenient way for that to happen so that staff didn't have more to add to their plate and they can put their energy into the kids, which is where I want it. So that seems like it's going to work out okay. As you know, the county has asked us to participate in school testing and also will be offering us the ability to do that staff testing and symptomatic testing. And I don't want anybody to think we're running like a drive-through clinic, but you all know that you send your children to school healthy, and inevitably, they don't fall ill at the right time. Sometimes it happens while they're here at school. And it would be wonderful if we had the ability to test them before you took them home so that you aren't dragging a sick child to another location to get tested. So in my last two family update letters of the summer, I did include a link to what's called a universal consent. That's a consent form from Onondaga County that really, in essence, covers the district by having parents give a signature that they're agreeing to testing. They do not have to agree to testing. They can certainly go and test their children or not, you know, in the case of pool testing, they can just not test. But if they're symptomatic, they can certainly take them elsewhere as well. So we are seeing those trickle in and are hoping that we'll continue to see them so that largely, not at the last minute, we're trying to get someone to come in and sign a consent when we have someone ill. So hoping that our parents will take notice of the consent form. I'll probably be sending it a third time before week's end and just reminding them that I'm not going to be able to test your child if they're here sick at school without this consent. There is another part to participating in this testing that the lab requires, and that's logging into and creating an account in a portal that the lab uses. And the main reason for that is that that's the way tests are coded, and that's the way that results are delivered to families so that they'll have access to their results, just like your MyCharts or any of those other portals that you're aware of, or if you've been COVID tested, you probably had to log into something to get your results there. It's the same kind of deal, fairly easy to navigate. I actually set up an account today so that when I speak to parents about it, I could speak intelligently about how easy the process is or how not easy the process is. And I found it to be relatively easy, and I think I'll be able to give them some good tips on how to prepare. We are seeing COVID cases in the community already. Just so you know, Jean and I had a very busy day on this front. I'm happy to report that it's looking more like having a cold, nothing too challenging for the folks that currently are affected by it, but certainly creates some stress when students aren't able to come, as you can imagine, for the first day of school, if not to mention the first week or longer. So please just keep people in your thoughts that have children that are in this situation right now and are a little stressed about not being able to be here with their friends. We currently have two students that I know have tested positive for COVID, and then eight that are quarantined, some of which are awaiting test results. I'm not necessarily going to have a list at every board meeting, but I did want you to understand that, you know, there are cases around, and right now, they don't appear to be serious cases, which is the good news for us. If it stays at a cold, we can handle that as long as we try to keep the spread from happening in school.
Michelle, I heard you said something wrong, but virtual or remote learning is not an option for students this year. However, if they have a note from a doctor or medical reason, that is permissible, but they are enrolled in a VOSIS program, correct?
Yeah, so let me give that a little context. You're exactly 100% correct. If a family wanted to enroll their children in a virtual program, you know, for the year, that's exactly how it would work. With these folks that are quarantined or isolated, different thing.
I'm talking about this. I'm talking about.
You're exactly correct.
If a child can't come to school because of a medical reason, can't be in person because of a medical reason other than having diagnosed.
100%.
Correct me if I'm wrong. They would be enrolled in a VOSIS virtual program.
If they so choose.
Right. Do we have any students that are in that situation?
We currently do not. Most of the people that are choosing an option not in our four walls, if you will, are going a homeschool route at this current time.
Do you know if, has there been any conversations with our teachers that in the event that there is students missing because of COVID or for other sicknesses, whatever, are there any teachers that maybe are capable of and willing to do where their class is filmed so kids can zoom in? Not that they have to do it, not required, but are there teachers that are making that possible, especially in the event that there is an uptick?
There will likely be a mixed bag of things happening, and it will largely be dependent upon that class and the ability to function that way, just based on the students that are in there and the nature of the course. So what we've committed to initially, until we see how things trend, is to take things on a case-by-case basis. So today, we've already started practicing that. We have, there's a high school student that'll probably be very capable of live streaming into classes, and the classes will be conducive to that. If the teacher, you know, agrees once John talks, I don't know if John had time today to have that conversation. And we also have, for example, some elementary students that the teachers will connect with the child, but probably won't be conducive to spend a long period of time live streaming. We also may have some folks where we're doing some after-school tutoring just to keep them going, you know, while they're out. A lot of it depends on so many factors, but I will keep you posted on what we find is working and if there's any trending.
From a technology standpoint, what is available for teachers? Like, so say somebody says, "You want to set up a Zoom for my kids?" Just to have it for any kids that's absent throughout the year, if their teacher was willing to do that, is there, how are they doing that? Like, is there?
Very easily.
Are they doing it like through their own computer, their phones? Like, is there?
No, they can do it through their computer. I know a lot of classrooms purchase additional cameras to make it easier. John's not in effect. We went through this last year, 82. So they're very equipped, if in the eventuality, you know, if that's the eventuality. I foresee from older kids, this happening in the class because it'll actually just be much easier than the alternative. There's times where, depending on who's in your room, by doing so and having to pay attention, like to two things, you end up cheating everyone, and that's something we want to avoid. I guess I don't know a better way to explain that, but they should be set up to do whatever. And if not, they, I think most people here are pretty comfortable asking. So school testing will begin next week. That's the testing, that's called surveillance testing. So we randomized people that are volunteered. We test a certain amount each week. They're grouped into smaller pods. If a pod comes there positive, each test is run individually to find the infected person. I had hoped to get testing on Thursday. I got Tuesday. So hopefully, Mike got Thursday. I was going to arm wrestle with him later and see if he could switch, just because I think Thursday would cause the least disruption to school. But I'm hoping that we'll be okay, you know, and this will be helpful. It's certainly voluntary. If we find that it's not helpful in our community, we can go a different direction. The issue is that then we don't have access to some of the other testing that's quite desirable, like the symptomatic. So that's what I've got for COVID update.
So big project update?
Yeah, just this evening, you saw in your agenda approval of this for the KCH kitchen work, and I just wanted to take a moment just to give you the roundup. We do have five total contractors for that work. The general contractor, and then there's a plumbing contractor, electrical contractor, the HVAC contractor, and then also separate contractor for kitchen equipment. That's a specialty area, so it's not your run-of-the-mill thing. Donna and Ryan worked really well together to coordinate what the needs were in that kitchen from his perspective and obviously from hers as the person that, you know, works in there and cooks and serves students. We are able to complete that work. Remember, there was some hinging on that E-layer. That gave us more money in this project or less if the E-layer was bad. But we are going to be able to take some of the capital outlay money to backfill the amount that we would need that was taken by that E-layer replacement. So we accepted the list of alternates that are listed in your agenda. We went over and over, and we said, "You know what? They're important because we're not touching this kitchen for a long time." And the equipment that we have listed for replacement, it's sort of like it's going to die. It's a matter of when, you know, it's on its last leg, so to speak. And the way it works is that you either replace it now when you're touching the kitchen in a more proactive position, or you go in one day to work and it doesn't work and you've got to feed kids. That's just not a great position for us to be in if we have the ability to replace it. It's sort of like robbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit. So we're going to just replace it in a more proactive position rather than deal with it as an emergency. I think the other, one of the others was, we have an exterior door on that kitchen that we'd also like to have access control over. It's an old door in bad shape. So that, it just, you know, when you're in there, we might as well be dealing with this stuff. I believe the work will begin over the holiday break in December and hoping to wrap it up by February. Donna is really aware of the schedule and has contingency plans in place to continue to feed using the kitchens in other buildings. And while this may be a foreign concept to those of you that have never thought of a kitchen not being able to cook, my father, when he retired from his real job, went to work delivering food between one school and another. It was cooked one place and delivered to another place. So I know that we're very capable of handling it.
Michelle, I know in your, in your update, as you started over the weekend, you made reference to this, and you talked a little bit about it at the last point, you that the low bidder for the GCH work was significantly below all the other bids.
Correct.
And typically, Brian clicked me along, but typically, that's not a good thing is the reason why. But the current construction manager feels comfortable with that. I'd still like to know why that is so significantly different.
I think he was able to, he looked to have, I think I said this to you last time, a couple projects. He was very forthright about his intentions. He likes to grab a couple projects a year that are schoolwork because it keeps his guys from getting laid off. So he, I don't want to say plays the game, but he knows how to play the game so that he can keep his guys employed during the leaner times. And Sean did a significant de-scoping. It's called the de-scoping process with him to make sure that he saw everything that's in there and the documents in order. So we should be in good shape. You know, Sean, this isn't Sean's first rodeo, so he knows how to handle such things, and, you know, I feel confident going in. The contractor seemed to be pretty forthright, you know, a good person, and his references, his references are checked out, so I think we're going to be okay.
Sean will be a construction manager through that project.
Correct. Sorry, the first day of school, when you're projecting through a mask, your throat's a little scratchy. So I left the information in this PowerPoint from last time, and I don't need, I don't need to repeat it all, but I do want to just draw your attention because at our next meeting, this project will be on for approval. So this was all the scope, and I want to draw your attention to the high school parking area redesign. Remember, our goal was to improve traffic flow and increase parking so that we can hopefully keep people from parking all over. I tried to add some marks to this diagram that you have in front of you at your seat. So if you see coming up Mustang Hill, which is that tail at the bottom, and going to the right, you can see there's a way to do the student drop-off. I call it parent drop-off. We're not really dropping the parents off, although maybe some of them would like to be dropped off and they just go to their jobs. But the parents would be dropping kids off, and they can circle right around the outside of that lot and drop off right up by the sidewalk. So that's good because they're dropping off where kids can still access the sidewalk, but they're not in the middle of the buses. The buses can come the same way, but they can fork off to the left and head up to the front of the building and drop off where they're dropping off now, without parent traffic mixed in. If you aren't dropping off at the high school currently, it can be a little bit like a game of Russian roulette as you're sitting there parked, wondering if you ought to come out of your spot and go around someone who's sitting in front of you. So this will add significant improvement to separating out those two traffic flows, but it also enabled us to expand lots, especially the lot closest to the stadium area. And those of you that come to athletic events know that there's overflow all over the lawn and all over everywhere, and I think this will greatly improve that situation.
This will expand that lot?
Yes.
So can we just, so that I can get a picture in my mind, if we come up that way and assume where that goes into that high school parent drop-off, that's the current entrance now? Is that, is this a different entrance that will be created?
I think the entrance is a little bit farther down than it currently is. That's not something I.
Yeah, it's close, the current is close.
Okay, so this would be actually before the current access?
Yeah.
And the parents would go down always to the end, down the fence cords around, and they could be dropping off in front of the auditorium.
Yep.
The main entrance, and then they would continue around and come out a new cutout exit?
Yeah.
And then, and then from there, where do they go?
They could either go back down the hill that will have to be stopped there. They could go right back down the hill, which unless they're dropping off someplace else, that's where they would go.
And then buses would come up this way, past those two entrances connected, and then up here in front of the school itself.
Yeah, and that's.
Right by the current entrance, in front of the school. And then they would continue down, past the big lot that's out there, almost to KCH, and then make a left-hand turn or continue out?
They would go down Mariner's Landing, which is what they do now. They could, will make it, I think we talked about turn radius all over the place here, testing turn radius with our schools and busters. They have the worst turn radius. But buses travel through and go down Mariner's Landing. I suppose one could turn there and come back, but.
And are we designating parking lots, students and staff?
It'll probably stay designated how it is, so the student lot is closer to the stadium, and the staff, I think, is where a lot is there. Because I am so beautifully facially challenged, I don't know if Tony even has any association that I might miss for Ryan, because they are both much more, much more facially challenged than mine.
I do have one. So the parent drop-off loop, you've got a left turn coming out of the parent drop-off loop to go back down, but you do have traffic going both ways the whole time, right?
Parents coming out to the left.
So parents coming out to the left? Would they be able to go to their left?
Well, you wouldn't want them in the bus drop-off. That's the whole reason you don't want them to go to the right.
So they would have, so that's basically what my question is. Are these two separate loops?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole point is avoid.
That's really the best way to answer it.
Right.
Okay. So they're not going to have, the parents are not going to have the option to turn right to go to KCH from here?
Right.
We would have to block that off, which we can.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I just want, it's just one of those.
No, it's a good question.
Because I can see people trying to turn left out of there, just assuming nobody's coming.
Right, right.
People coming through them being stupid.
So it can be parking or it cannot be. We've looked at two drawings. It just depends on how much we can comb it and that could all be visitor parking. We would have it there and we can decide if we want to actually use it, if we want to hashtag that whole area and not, we've got it up along the building.
So this is not, where those arrows are in front of the school is not the current?
You guys all.
Where your.
Okay.
It's a great thing, everything that's there and recreating places that sort of resemble what's there, but they may not completely line up. You know, that was our goal from the beginning. If we wipe this away and start from scratch and we achieve these two things.
Right.
So I can't tell you measurement-wise exactly, I mean, but the sidewalk is the sidewalk. So this is the sidewalk, I think, in front of the building and this is the green space and then this is the building.
This looks like the buses would go through the parking lot.
They can. They can, but it's an expanded lot.
Right.
If we use this. So the other thing is, remember, there's a little building, there's a little shaft sitting right about here. And that shaft will have to be relocated if we go with a plan to relocate it. It's mechanical shaft, Ryan can tell you everything is in there.
The traditional line in, I have shafts for, for, for.
Okay. Well, this, with that optional parking closest to the building there would be really nice for anybody that has any, you know, for, yeah, going in and out. That's so much closer, especially in weather, if somebody has any physical needs to be closer, that's, that to me is a tremendous improvement having that access up there.
I want you to picture KCH visitor parking.
Right.
Everybody can see that?
Right, yeah.
That's the concept there.
Right.
If we decide to go with having parking there, that parking gets toned off so that people aren't coming in and out in the morning when parents are dropping off. But then you have it.
Right.
You're right there.
Yeah.
Get out of your car, run right in the building, get things done and move on.
Okay.
Okay. All students are still using the lean-in, right? So this is all their converging over here, so it's one thing. Any parent drop-off or students walking up the hill would probably use that. Buses currently drop-off going in the center and they still. But your cap is like, some of them, anyway, depending on where they're going when they get in there. If it's an athlete and they want to go to their forest locker, they will probably go in the, go up the forest, they're going to pick a store. There's also that rule idea, a lot of them in the morning.
Okay.
So the tough part is that a lot of this, you know, we ask them to draw something up, put out these concepts. We don't necessarily nail every bit of it down until you get a little farther in the process because you don't want to be paying for too much of the nine words we have. And that's a challenge of the school project, it's weird, but you're voting on a concept and then the design work actually has to happen or some of the fineers fail, they're running out. So I'm not trying to be sketchy with that. That's the reason we're, successfully, this is what we're trying to achieve. We asked Brittany to put something together, you know, from the call out line that we need our needs, to put some things together. We felt like this was probably closest to what we would be looking to achieve. That was transportation to Stephen to capture what she was thinking. Obviously, Ryan's been involved with us because there's a lot of other priorities to this project, so we're feeling like successfully this is what we're up.
The other thing that we're planning to do, just to remind you, is have some alternates and hope that by the time this project gets bid, we aren't seeing COVID numbers and we might be able to capture something. And our next priorities are renovations of those DMF locker rooms. We actually had an occurrence that gave us a little more hope with this renovation process that bids might come in a little better than they had originally. And that is there was a pipe that's in much better shape. What Ryan had the unfortunate experience of needing to run a camera in that line because it's something that had happened, but what it yielded is that it's not collapsed than we thought part of it was. So it may be that we don't have to do some of the work that we originally thought, that we would have been checking on later anyway, but we checked on it earlier. The other alternate that will be included when this goes for public vote is the replacement of the balance of those original windows at DMF. There's two locations that remain and those are the Ooze Den and the Auditorium that weren't captured. So we talked, Michael has started.
Of course. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the alternates will only occur based on comes below the border of two families?
Correct.
And are these, you indicated that the alternates from this document that you sent out, are they prioritized or are they prioritized up there? What is the priority of this?
Of the DMF locker room and the DMS auditorium window?
And the.
Replace paving of learner's landing.
That was just an alternative on the.
Replace paving from North Street to KCH. That's actually, I.
That's interesting. But that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, and I took that from the, from the memory that we were going to talk about. So there's, I don't think, hasn't, probably, fired. By a landline, we were a little bit more, we were waiting for. And those estimates, the health have. So when we looked at the overall driving phase and parking areas, we initially set out to replace most of that all in. And unfortunately, the cost of increased public access, that's.
Well, there's another, just before you finish that.
Well, we don't know.
I personally hope that we can have Brittany put together that number directly. Brittany's prior to paving the block and driveway and taking that area back after the.
But what we asked for was, we're probably going to have to prioritize the parking and driveway areas that have less than seven years of useful life and that area is right on the cusp. If you, if you drive through there, if you walk through there, that would be better, you can see that that stretch is definitely not. And you can see it when you look at it. But we're thinking right now, at least, what I'm thinking right now is that we probably won't be able to capture that just because if it has, if she thinks it has at least seven years of useful life, then we'll be replacing it before it's sort of at the end of its useful life. And I would rather wait till the end of its useful life simply because there's life left in it. It, there, it isn't in the best state, but it's her feeling that there's still some life left in that stretch. And Tony's right, that we are in such a volatile time for estimates that we are trying to figure out what we think we can package based on what the priorities are. Because sadly, when you're building building projects, there is no shortage of things that need to get done. The age of these buildings and the magnitude of what we're dealing with here, there's always something. So my goal was that we replace the roofs that need to be done and as much of the paving as possible. That being said, I also wanted Brittany's opinion on where's there useful life left because we're not going to be able to do it all. And we shouldn't do it all. If there's life left in it, even if it's ugly and we don't like it, you know, we need to use it until it's used up if we will. So what we're thinking today, based on the estimate, the initial estimate, waiting for another set of estimates, is that we have to put together some sort of a financing plan that we think will work. So right now, we know we have about 10 million for a project that utilizes that debt replacement. And so that basically leaves us with a local share equal to what is being paid off at the time that this project will come on. So that's that notion. You pay off a mortgage and you add a mortgage of same value.
As you can roll an older existing debt.
It's sort of rolling into new debt that's equal to the old debt. The problem is that with escalation, we are not feeling that we can accomplish what really needs to be accomplished just for that amount. So we are going to be asking to, remember that capital reserve that we created probably four years ago, four and a half years ago? Well, we're going to be asking to move money into that, which has always been our intention, to fund that reserve so that that can cover the local share of an additional amount of money. Okay? So we'll be able to still stand in front of our taxpayers and say, we can do this with no additional tax impact other than what you've already incurred, which is our goal. We're trying to keep the debt load pretty even so that people aren't, you know, seeing debt escalate and escalate without end. But the reality is, Tony had talked, oh God, probably at least a year ago about this notion that with prices going up, you can replace debt all day long, but unfortunately a hundred dollars doesn't go as far as it used to go. And at some point, you're in a facility pole. And so this is the beginning, our facility pole starting one project earlier than Tony and I thought, because we really thought maybe we could get through this project without having to use some of that capital reserve, but we don't think we're going to be able to. And right now, the numbers are bearing out that we aren't going to be able to. So that being said, we still have a strategy that I think is really viable. So the way that works is that when you vote to initiate the process of a project, you're also voting on funding that capital reserve from existing reserves. And then when the community votes, they're actually voting on how we finance the project. So they're voting basically to allow us to bond for the project in a certain amount, not to exceed amount, and also to extend the reserves that we have to pay for the part of the local share. So those are the two processes left in solidifying the financing of the project. Obviously, this is all run through our fiscal advisors and making sure that we're doing everything the way the law dictates. It's a lot to sort of wrap your head around and so I wanted to hit it again because I felt like last time maybe we were thinking about school opening more, building projects. So you're going to be voting on the initiation of the project and the funding of that capital reserve.
Anybody have any other questions?
What is the amount that we have in our capital reserve to be?
Right now, it's not funded at all. We're going to fund it.
So we depleted or we just never put into it?
We just never put into it.
We.
Yeah. Our goal was to create it, knowing that when the time came, we would put money in it. And we're at that time.
And this money that goes in would be specifically earmarked for this project?
It would be earmarked for this project. Now, if prices come down and we don't need, you know, we'll have a strategy, either we use this money and we don't bond for all of it, you know, our fiscal advisor will help us figure out what's more fit to be found for the district going forward, or we expend the reserve money and we, or we bond for all of it and don't spend all of the reserve. When you, when you fund a capital reserve, you earmark for capital improvements and there's some specificity to it, but there's enough flex that you could use it for something, something else that's forthcoming. You know, so we wouldn't pigeonhole ourselves to give up that flexibility down the road if we decided to approach it a little bit differently. I don't know, Tony, is that, is there anything you would add to that? With a project that isn't fully designed, because you can't design it until you've been given approval. So we've been through this a lot, I know, but it always seems weird every time you're standing up here doing that, it's like, is this real? But this is how it works.
Any other questions, please? Item number five, I'd say you'll appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Item number five, does any comments? On item six business, six point one, acceptance bid. The result of the Board of Education accepts following proposals for completion of renovations to KCH facing Hepburn Elementary School kitchen. Do you need, is in front of you, they have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Mine.
Both, here. And six point two, approval of special education plan. The Office of Board of Education approves the district's special education plan 2021, 2023. Is that to your home? Yeah, correct. They have a motion?
Yeah. Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Mine.
Both, here. And six point three, reopening plan. The Office of Board of Education approves the Marcellus School District COVID-19 reopening plan of 2021, 2022 school year. They have a motion? Both, second. Comments or questions? All those in favor? All, both, here. Item seven, personnel, the following personalities to be approved. Seven point one. Seven point eight, laughing. They have a motion?
Yes.
Please, second. Comments or questions? In favor?
Mine.
Both, here. Item eight, consent agenda. The Office of Board of Education insists that the following items be approved. Item eight point one to eight point five, they have a motion? Second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Mine.
Both, here. Item nine, information items.
So we are on at this point from Monday, the 13th, from five to eight, we will be here. And Jean sent out a menu order form, in the form of a Google form from Chimera. There's a couple of options. You can do half sandwich, half salad, or a whole sandwich meal or a whole salad meal. And you have that, you can complete it so we can place orders. And the New York State School Boards Association will be here reviewing for roles with us. Hopefully, our next one will be able to branch out.